And we're going to go back to the agenda. And Melissa, I just want to confirm, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, Council, let's go ahead and move back to the agenda to Conductive Business, item 7.
Item 7A, Review and Provide Direction Regarding Title V: Nuisances of the San Bruno Municipal Code.
City Attorney De Frano.
Thank you. We're going to take just a minute to get the PowerPoint up, so please bear with us. All right. Can everybody see the presentation and hear me?
I can.
Yep.
Looks good.
Yes?
Yes.
All right. So, tonight, we're going to take a couple of minutes and look through Title V, which is part of the city's municipal code revision process. And our agenda tonight is we're going to go over just a bit of a background. We're going to discuss the policy issues around Title V and request some direction from all of you, and then go over next steps. So here's the background. You've seen this before for our prior municipal code amendments. And so, we started this process in late 2018. And the primary focus for the city council was to review these chapters of the municipal code for internal consistency and to make sure they are consistent with current law. And in addition to that, the city council has also had a policy discussion for those required revisions about a number of provisions in each of those chapters. So, for example, in October of 2018, we looked at Title 1 and Title 2. There were a number of policy changes in both of those titles. And then, we... The Quality Code Publishing, which is our code publishing company, completed their review of the municipal code and made a variety of recommendations. So then, in November, the city council adopted revisions to Title 1 and Title 2. And then, in July, there was a discussion of Title 2 and the rest of Title 3, again, with some policy direction on a couple of key items. And then, finally, most recently, last month, you adopted revisions to Title 4, Licenses and Regulations. And again, also there, there were a number of policy revisions for consistency with state law and issues, for example, such as vending in city parks. So, that's where we've been. And this slide shows where we're going tonight and in the next couple of meetings. So, Title V has eight chapters, and the title of the title is nuisances. So, this is an important chapter, and we want to make sure that we go through any and all of your questions that you have about it before we bring it back. So, these eight chapters have to do with what's a nuisance, talking about enforcement, and then talking about particular kinds of nuisances, like weeds, graffiti, unruly gatherings, alcoholic beverage sales for businesses that have already been approved, maintenance of distressed properties, and then, finally, registration of foreclosed and abandoned properties. So, all of these things are part of Title V, which is what the city does to regulate, basically, the look and feel of the community. So, this is an important chapter, and there are a number of policy questions that we're going to go over tonight. And before we do that, I want to just give you a very brief preview of what we're going to be focusing on. So, we'll mostly focus on Chapter 5.04, which is the definition of a nuisance. And so, the important thing here is we want to look to make sure that this section is consistent with the newly amended zoning ordinance regarding parking. So, we'll spend a few minutes talking about that. I want to make sure that we take a pause to discuss any other desired amendments about parking. And this is, by the way, on private property, not on public property, because that's what nuisances are addressing on public, excuse me, private property. And then, finally, we want to take some time to discuss any new provisions about other topics that maybe aren't currently covered in the chapter. So, let's take just a minute and review the chapters where we're proposing only minor amendments. There are some of those in 5.08, which is Enforcement, Nuisance Abatement, and Cost Recovery. There are some in 5.16 regarding graffiti, and some in 5.22 regarding alcoholic beverage sales. And all of those are addressed in more detail in the staff report. I'm not going to go over them in detail right now, but I'd be happy to answer any questions about them. So, if we go back to nuisances in general, and I think it's important, this was in the staff report, but I want to display the entire portion of the staff report, because I think it's important for the city council and the public to understand that Title V has really been proved to be both comprehensive and sufficient to address by code many, if not virtually all, of the code enforcement issues in the city. Somebody might say, "Well, that's surprising, because we still have code enforcement issues in the city. How can that possibly be?" And the answer is, because difficult code enforcement cases are usually not the result of inadequate ordinances. We are going to talk about some potential changes to the ordinance tonight, but for the most part, you'll see, if you read through the ordinance carefully, as both the staff did in our preparation, and as I did as well, that most of the nuisance conditions are covered in the ordinance. Why is code enforcement often so difficult? And there are a few reasons for that. The first thing is to understand the distinction between a public and a private nuisance. And I have that definition in the staff report. And I just want to indicate that a city, in its nuisance ordinance, that's designed to address public nuisances. Private nuisances are those things that might affect one neighbor to another, but don't affect the entire neighborhood or the entire community. That's the definition in the Civil Code, in Section 3480. So, for a public nuisance, you need the neighborhood. You need a considerable number of persons. That's what the code says. So, that's different than a private nuisance, which might be... One neighbor might be complaining about what another neighbor is doing on their property. There might be somebody who's, you know, passing through the neighborhood and might see something that they might consider to be a nuisance to them, but the neighborhood isn't complaining about it. So, that's the distinction. And generally, what the city allocates its resources to are dealing with public nuisances, because that's what taxpayer dollars should go to, is addressing public nuisances, not private disputes between individuals. Another reason why code enforcement is often challenging is because some of the violations that are most difficult are transitory. So, these are things that the person might be complaining about it, and it might be a valid complaint, but then, by the time the code enforcement officer shows up, it's not there anymore. So, those are difficult to deal with, because in order to prosecute a code enforcement case, the staff has to personally either observe or confirm the violation. And you would see that if we took the resident's word for it, which, of course, we believe them, but if that's all we had, that's not really going to hold up in a court to justify a city sanction against somebody where the only testimony is somebody else says that they heard or saw it. Another reason why code enforcement is sometimes difficult is violations might be hard to confirm. So, a good example of this is individuals who might be operating a business out of their home, either without a business license or without a permit from the Community Development Department. The only way to confirm that is to go into the house, get consent to do that, and basically, search the premises for evidence of a business. So, those are very difficult violations to confirm. And then, finally, and this is, I think, what occurs most often, is residents who are engaging in behavior that might violate our code can be resistant, and they can be resistant to changing their behavior, even if there's a sanction imposed, like a fine, and often irrespective of what the amount of the fine is. So, why is that? Why don't most people just follow the rules? And one reason is that there might be circumstances outside of their control that they can't do anything about. Another reason is there might be a dispute between neighbors that kind of underlies the issue. It's not really the nuisance, but it's something else. And so, if you don't resolve that underlying issue, you're not going to ever resolve the nuisance. Another common reason why these things are difficult to rectify is it's expensive. So, for example, if you're telling somebody they have to take down, you know, half of their house, or they have to take down a shed they built that they're storing their tools in, these are expenses that the property owner will want to avoid incurring. And then, finally, related to that, there's some advantage to the property owner to retaining the condition. Sometimes, it's an economic advantage, but sometimes, there are other advantages that are non-economic. And so, these are things, for example, where a property owner... We had a code enforcement case many, some years ago, in which there was a... The property was very distressed. The property owner didn't do anything about the property, but we found out the reason was there was a disturbing event that occurred in the property to the property owner, and they really couldn't go back there. So, they just let it fall into disrepair. So, once we found that out, we were able to work with the property owner to list the property, and it was eventually rectified. So, these are all reasons why some code enforcement cases are difficult. So, with that background, what did we do before embarking on a revision, proposed revision of Chapter 5? Well, the first stop was the Community Development Department in requesting staff input. And what we asked staff is, "What's missing from the code? What do you wish you had in the code to deal with nuisance conditions that you have seen out in the field, where you would say to yourself, 'Gosh, if only the code said X, then we could address this.'" That was the question we asked staff. So, staff came up with a couple of things. Surprisingly, not very many. That was interesting. I thought maybe there might be more, but there weren't. There were only a few. And the first thing they mentioned was parking. And I think this is an interest of the community and an interest of the city council. So, let's spend a couple of minutes talking about how the issues surrounding parking are relating to Title 12. So, here's the challenge with parking and parking on private property. And I usually don't like to read my slides, but let me read this one, because I think this is important, that we all are on the same footing. So, the challenge with addressing parking on private property is that in some neighborhoods, the built environment is really not adequate to accommodate the number and types of operable and inoperable vehicles that residents own and operate in those neighborhoods. That's what a number of years of research and data and analysis has uncovered. And that's a very difficult problem for cities to solve, because we can't really change the built environment very easily, and we can't make residents change the built environment, not the public realm. So, that's our challenge with parking. And I think, once articulated, I think we'll all realize that this really satisfies all of the criteria in the last slide for a difficult code enforcement matter. You know, there's an advantage to the property owner to having the cars parked on his or her property. It's expensive to either register them, or to get rid of them, or to store them somewhere. There is reasons why they want to have the car close by. They don't want to have it far away. Might be circumstances outside of their control. For example, they might be living with a number of people in the household, and so, therefore, those people might have vehicles. So, there's all kinds of things that make parking on... Or dealing with parking on private property a real challenge. So, what has the city done in response to community interest in parking? Well, they've done three things. The first thing the city council did is it adopted a residential permit parking program. And the purpose of that, one of the purposes, was to limit overcrowding in the street. So, in other words, the theory was, "We don't want to have these cars competing for scarce parking spaces on the street. Let's have the neighborhood agree, if they wish, to have a permit parking program to limit the number of cars that are parked on the public street, so that that way, when you come home from work, or in the evening, or whatever, or come home in the morning, you have a place to park, or at least a larger opportunity to find a place to park." So, that was the first thing that the city council did in response to community interest. The second thing the city did was did additional periodic enforcement for violations on streets in different neighborhoods, and in those neighborhoods which are particularly impacted. And so, the city council is aware that there was a campaign, a number of them, by the police department, to enforce on public streets, parking in driveways, parking on the sidewalk, and so on. So, that was done for a period of time. And then, the final thing the city council just recently did is they adopted new zoning regulations that allow, or incentivize, or make easier the creation of additional off-street parking on non-conforming private property. Okay, well, what does that mean? What that means is that if you have a property that has a substandard garage, or maybe only a one-car garage, and maybe the car doesn't even fit in the garage, or a driveway that is substandard, it's not long enough, so you can hardly park a car in it. It allowed a variety of options for residents to, if they wished, to modify their property in certain ways, so they could park more of their vehicles on their private property, thus getting them off of the street. So, those are the three things that the city council did. Now, it's important to note that the purpose of the zoning code is really to address required parking for residential uses. The zoning code is, which is Chapter 12, Title 12, is not a mechanism to determine whether we should or shouldn't have certain kinds of vehicles, or certain kinds of personal property, or whether it's a public nuisance, to display those things on private property. All the zoning code does is says, "If you have a private property, you have to have a certain amount of required parking." And in cases where your neighborhood is impacted, or your property is impacted, the city is going to make it easier for you to park vehicles, of whatever type they might be, on your property, so that they can be gotten off the street. That was the reason for the zoning code. Conversely, Title V, which is what we're dealing with tonight, sorry, only addresses conditions that are a public nuisance. So, Title V doesn't talk about, if you own a single-family home, how many off-street parking spaces do you need. What Title V talks about is, if you own a single-family home, we really don't want you to be putting ugly things out on the driveway. So, let's talk about what those things are under the current definition in Title V. So, under the zoning code that the city council just adopted, what's allowed? I'm going to display a couple of these things at the same time. So, under the zoning code for your required parking, you can park a motor vehicle, an operable motor vehicle, on a garage apron, so that's the section in front of the garage, a driveway, or in an adjacent side yard with certain conditions. So, that's what you can do if you own one of these substandard properties with a short driveway or a too-small garage. And motor vehicles, for purpose of the zoning ordinance, does include a trailer, which an RV is stored. So, for example, in your driveway, you can have a motor vehicle, like a Honda Civic, and then, right next to it, you can have a trailer with a camper on it, for example. And the reason for this rule is because the city has determined that we'd rather have your trailer with a camper on it on your private property, as opposed to on the street, taking up one and a half or two parking spaces. Regarding inoperable vehicles, the zoning code is pretty clear. It says you can't park them in the visible front or side yards. So, no inoperable vehicles if they're visible in the front and side yards. All right. What does Title V, in comparison, allow? All right. Well, operable vehicles. You can park a boat, a trailer, a camper, or an RV, only one of those things, in the garage, that's fine. We don't care what you park in your garage particularly, because you can't see it, or on a city-approved driveway. Well, that's consistent with the zoning code, as you can see, because, again, you can have your Honda Civic, and right next to it, your boat on a trailer. That's okay under the zoning code, and it's also okay under Title V. What does Title V say about inoperable vehicles? Well, again, similarly to the zoning code, if they're in your front or side yard, we don't want to see them. They have to be either screened or otherwise allowed by the zoning code. Well, they're not allowed in the zoning code, so there you are. So, again, both the amended zoning code that the city council adopted recently and the current version of Title V are pretty consistent. So, what did staff identify as a potential issue for parking on private property? And the first thing that we came up with is, we said, "Well, Title V says you can have one of those things, boats, trailers..." Sorry, have to flip my screen over here. Campers or RVs, you can have one of those. Well, it's within the city council's policy discretion to change that, if they want to. They could say, "You could have none of those. You can't park any of those on private property." Or they could say, "You know what? You can park two of them on private property or more, because if we don't let you park two on private property, well, you're going to park it on the street, and that might be an issue." So, that's one policy question for the city council. The second policy question is, you could decide that the prohibitions for inoperable vehicles aren't quite strong enough. And you could say, "You know what? We don't like the look of these inoperable vehicles, and we like them so little that we don't want any of them parked anywhere on your property where it's visible, even if it's screened. So, even if you have a fence around it, or it's behind a gate in your side yard, if you can see that, whether you can see it or not, we don't want you to park it on your property." So, immediately, you'll notice that we have a difficulty with enforcement on that, because if somebody decides to violate that code, which they very well might, then a warrant might be required to get into private property if it's covered or screened. So, that would be a very difficult thing to prohibit. That's the reason why the code currently says, "We prohibit inoperable vehicles, but if they're screened, then you can put them there." And we don't want to be going behind those screens without a warrant. So, those are the possible... Really, the two issues that came up when we were reviewing the code as to possible changes the city council could make, either change the number of allowed boats, trailers, campers, or RVs from one to something different, or prohibit any inoperable vehicle parking, but again, there's some enforcement problems with that. So, related to this, and sort of the final topic in parking, has to do with the question of, we'll just call them tarps or coverings. And this has come up on a number of occasions. So, the question is to cover or not to cover? And the reason why that's a question is because the city actually can't uncover vehicles on parking property without a warrant, to determine just if they're operable, or if they have a current registration. So, that's the conundrum. And I suppose it's possible that people in the community may have differing views about what's less attractive. Some people might say, "Well, you know, if you have that old inoperable car that you've always been waiting to work on, frankly, it's a good-looking car. I'd rather look at that than a tarp." But other folks might have the opposite opinion. They might rather see, look at a tarp than your old inoperable jalopy that you're never going to get to. So, the difficulty... There's a couple of difficulties with saying, "We're going to prohibit tarps to cover vehicles on private property," but it is a policy option for the city council, and we could certainly explore it. So, that concludes the parking topics that we think are worthy of some discussion under the Title V of the code. But there are just a couple of other things that you might want to consider. One of the suggestions that our staff made, which we thought was a great idea, is to prohibit feeding of wild animals. And this has become a public nuisance in some areas, especially the downtown, where you have individuals that may be associated with some businesses feeding pigeons, and they create a public nuisance. So, that's something that I think the council should definitely consider exploring. The other thing that staff recommended, both Building Department and code enforcement, is some wording amendments throughout the code to conform with state law, and those are reflected in the draft that's attached to your staff report. And unless you have questions about them, I'm not going to go over them in detail right now. So, what are the next steps? Is we're looking for some direction, and particularly, on those two issues, parking and tarps. And then, we would be ready to introduce and adopt amendments at a subsequent meeting. And the schedule, at the moment anyway, remains on track to complete all 11 chapters, hopefully, by 2021. If we complete Chapter 5 in the next, you know, month or two, we'll be a little less than half-done, and the other chapters should come in due course. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark, for the presentation. And for the public as well, it's also that one of the things the council tasked the city attorney was, going through each of the chapters in the municipal code, and again, reviewing them, bringing them up to date, making sure they're consistent with the other chapters, and so, they all flow and are in sync. And I appreciate that. Do we have any questions of Mark's on specifics to his presentation that he gave? Hands up there. Well, I think a lot of us probably have comments. So, why don't we... Why don't I go circle... Why don't I start? Well, I see Linda has her hand up, and then, you know, I'll just call on each person, because I think everybody may have something, right? So, first, we'll go to Linda.
Yeah, I just have... I have a question, and then, I guess, the other... And you can do public comment, I guess. But my question, Mark, is, I guess, it would help to have numbers. So, I appreciate you bringing this to us, because I know it's been an issue that has come up. But one thing I don't know is how many complaints you get about each area. So, for example, like the trailers, you know, people who have boats. I am not aware of the extent of the concern, and I think it would help drive the policy decision to know how many complaints are we getting to enact a new policy. I'm not sure if you know, but that's one of the questions that I have.
Well, that's a good question. Sorry, we're having an audio difficulty. That's a good question. I... So, I don't actually get any complaints. Those complaints all go to the code enforcement department, and they're tracked and logged, so I don't have an answer to that. But it was apparently enough of them, or complaints were sufficiently persistent, that the code enforcement officers sort of put this on their list as something that they're, you know, that they occasionally, or at least more than occasionally, encounter. So, we could certainly provide some sort of breakdown of that information, perhaps, at a separate session regarding the operations of code enforcement. But I understand you make a good point, in that it'd be interesting to know what the data is before sort of deciding, you know, a policy decision. What I can tell you is that in past years, before I got to the city, actually, I had heard that there was an effort to reduce or eliminate the number of RVs parked on private property, and that was met with, I will just say, a great deal of community consternation. Some of the council members may know about that. And so, that's probably the reason why Title V says you can have one of them.
Okay. I... Yeah, that's... This is... Is this... Will this be like the Chapter 4, where you say, where you're going to bring this back? This is just an introduction, and then you bring it back again for more comments, and then, I think it becomes back the third time for a vote?
This is information.
Looking for any direction the city council has tonight. And then, at the next meeting, we would bring the ordinance back for introduction. That's another opportunity for the public and the city council to comment on the ordinance. And then, if there are comments, we could bring it back again. If there are major revisions, or if there are revisions, those revisions can be made, you know, at the time, and it can be brought back for adoption. But there's at least two more meetings to answer your question.
Okay. So, Mayor Medina, I'm not sure if you want to just limit questions to the items that City Attorney De Frano is proposing for now, and then, public comment, or do you want me to ask all my questions now?
Well, what I thought is, maybe we do any quick questions. I'm seeing that we do have one member of the public that wishes to speak. So, you know, I'm free to do it if we want. We can take the member of the public, if that's okay? And then, we can come back to us. And then, Linda, I can start back with you, and then, we'll just go down the list. Is that all right?
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, go. I'm seeing one hand up, and I'm seeing Mr. Steven Seymour. I think you can go ahead. I think you're unmuted, and why don't you give it a test, see if we can hear you?
I'm... Can you hear me?
We can hear you perfectly. We'll just get Melissa to get ready, and when you're ready, go ahead, sir.
That's those three minutes. All right. Thank you. I just want to say that I think parking in people's front yards leads to blight. And the fact that our city would even consider such a thing is a problem for me. We have all sorts of other mitigation issues that we could take into consideration, and that is... And that is, uh, through the, uh, permitting process. Unfortunately, the permitting process that we have right now is very cumbersome. Uh, but there are many cities who, uh, have permitting processes that would allow us to ensure that people don't, uh, basically collect cars. Um, and the only reason people would have to park in their front lawn is to collect cars. And any city that wants to decide to say that it's okay in their city ordinance to park cars on their front lawn is a city that, uh, I don't know, I'm really concerned with. I happen to live in that city who's, uh, if, if I understand this correctly, is considering that option. And I don't think that's an option that we can, should consider. I think that San Bruno, uh, lends itself to a city that should be, uh, uh, basically put, uh, higher on a pedestal. We're right next to the San Francisco Airport. Um, there are, and it, another thing, I mean, it's an eyesore to see people parking on their front lawns. Uh, so, um, I, I, I think that we can do much better than this. Um, I realize that we have small driveways, we have parking constraints. But I think that we need to consider, uh, uh, um, issues um, that will resolve this other than saying, okay, it's okay to put a car or more on your front line if, uh, on, in, in the front of your yard if it's, uh, uh, close to your driveway. I just don't, I, I'm, I have to tell you, I'm a little, uh, aghast at this, uh, particular o- option. It doesn't seem right. And if you can do it down here, for those of you who are up on the hill, if you can do it down here, if we make this something that's okay, um, and it alleviates some of the pressure on, 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 uh, I, I hate to say this because I don't like to divide the city, I think that, and I'm not trying to divide the city. I think that we are living in different, um, uh, uh, neighborhoods. And our neighborhood on the east side is, uh, more congested, uh, than on the west side. But if it can happen here, then it can happen all throughout the city. And I don't think that's something that we want in San Bruno. And if we have staff and, uh, um, legal who are trying to push this through, I think you can, you should consider whether or not they should be the staff and legal that you hold and have. Because there are others who would protect our communities. And I know that my wife wants to talk, so maybe we could reset the clock.
Hold on, Sandra.
Thank you.
Hold, hold on. Okay, please.
Okay, I think just with the lawn issue, I think we're really coming at this from a defeatist point of view. It's like we're almost looking like how not to do things better, just kind of throwing our arms up in the air. And, you know, we've heard before that it's the culture of the neighborhood. Well, if you do any less enforcing than you're doing now, our culture is going to get a lot worse. And I, I just can't believe that's an option. But anyway, you did talk, um, about there are areas where cars are parked in their driveway for years and the neighbors don't complain. So, you know, it should only be considered if it's within the neighborhood. Well, a lot of people are very, very uncomfortable to call on their neighbor. So what they do, they call someone else from outside the neighborhood and have them call in. Because unfortunately, too often we've heard that code enforcement might have told them who called being their neighbors and they stopped calling 10, 20, 30 years ago. They're just, they don't feel safe about it. So that's one thing to consider. Another thing to consider is the only reason we're here thinking about parking on lawns is because we haven't been consistent. We have not been consistent in enforcing the rules. And I, I just really think we could do a lot better. And when it comes down to it, I have a small driveway, so, you know, I have the luxury of being able to get a car that fits within that. And we went down from two cars to one, it's working out great. But, um, I wouldn't go out and buy a Ford pickup and think that that was going to be okay just to block my whole sidewalk for my neighbors to get around. Um, so I think that's a personal situation and I think every resident needs to see how they could comply to the law. I think that's where the burden is. It's on me to follow the regulations. And, you know, if I was holding on to somebody's junker for 20 years, um, I, I think the city should have the right to say, you know what, you're bringing this neighborhood down. And also in the long run, we don't know what tomorrow holds. But if people are parking on their lawns, my house value is going to go down. As it is, we already confirmed earlier today that we're at the bottom of the list for getting our streets fixed. So we have broken down streets, we have cars blocking sidewalks. You add a car to lawns, I don't know that this is a place, uh, I would want to consider living in possibly. It's just the standard keeps dropping. Instead of trying to keep it up and plan and be proactive, the, the bar gets lower and lower and I, we could do a hell of a lot better than this. Thank you.
Thank you. I see one other hand up and that is, uh, Tim. Tim, um, uh, if you can unmute yourself. There you go, Tim. Um, you've been unmuted and the clock will start when you begin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And everybody else out there. Um, I have a concern about boats and RVs within the neighborhoods. They should not be allowed to park. And I know other cities have ordinances that don't allow these in the neighborhoods. Especially where I live, where our family lives and some of our friends live. Very impacted when a boat, RV is parked in the neighborhood. And, you know, they only use these vehicles, do not move because they're recreational vehicles, they're seasonal vehicles. They're only used maybe two or three months out of the whole year. So that is a big, very big concern. And plus, um, you know, and then Huntington Avenue between, um, we'll say Florida and, um, San Felipe. There are, people like to park their boats there and let them sit there for, for weeks, for months. And there's no enforcement on that at all unless somebody calls it in. So I would like to see, uh, and, and that's impacting the, the neighborhood too. Everybody uses that, that area to park. That lives on that strip of, of road. So I would like to see that, you know, cleaned up and enforced. And, um, and, uh, also to reiterate blocking the sidewalks. And that is a big issue regarding, uh, you know, blocking sidewalk for pedestrians have the right of way. That's what the sidewalks are made for. People, you know, have, in strollers have difficulties getting around. It's a safety issue. They have to go into the street to get around the vehicle. So, so that is another concern. And I like to see better enforcement that change the culture of the city. I know it's not easy to do, but I would like to see that, um, changed and, and see a better improvement in our neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Um, I'm seeing no other hands. Unless the city clerk sees something, I don't, then we're going to go ahead uh, and end any public comment and bring it back to council. Um, as we bring it back to council, I, I, I want to, I just want to clarify for all of us is that in reading the staff report, I did not see, or unless I overlooked it, my colleagues can correct me, that it was proposing for somebody to park on their lawn in the front. So I'm going to ask the city attorney to, and I'm sorry colleagues, I, I could just kind of want to address that because that's not what I kind of was reading. So I, I want to make that clear. I also want to make clear the process. This process is for guidance. And this process is for feedback from council. So our legal counsel or our city manager does not make policy, the council does. But they do have to bring it to us, uh, after getting staff's input and give us what they know. And we give them direction to how we want to see it molded. Um, so to, to feel that somebody is pushing their, their desire on us, I don't think it's fair to us uh, or fair to the others because, uh, really we're here giving that direction. And that's what they've come to. And so, uh, what we direct, uh, will be, um, drafted. Uh, city attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, uh, gosh, I, I sure hope I didn't give anybody the impression that either the staff report or the presentation or the PowerPoint or anything that staff is suggesting suggests that people can park their cars on the lawn. The, the answer is that they can't do that now. And there's nothing in the proposed changes to the ordinance, uh, that they would be able to do that. And I know that the city manager has a, a little bit of detail, uh, regarding the amendments to the parking code that were adopted by the city council that deal with parking in the front yard area in order to move those vehicles off the street.
Sure. Thank you, Mark.
Your feedback.
All right, I think we're better. We're not.
Okay. Okay, so thank you, Mark. I, I just want to reiterate that, uh, at no time, uh, did staff ever recommend, um, or is it allowed for cars to be parked, um, on the sidewalk? The changes to, I mean, on the sidewalk or, uh, the lawn. The recent changes allow homes to potentially increase their private parking in the front of their house. But that has to be paved. And I, I think we can all think of a number of, uh, places in our community where there is not sufficient private parking. But there is room to widen the driveway it, by paving it. Or even allow parking on the side yard if that side yard is paved. And so that's what the code allows now, um, in an increased capacity. Because we know that a number of areas in our community unfortunately has a, has a built environment that does not have sufficient off-street parking. And we want it to allow that through the code. It is not a by right. It still has to go through a discretionary approval process, uh, through staff. And so certainly all of the aesthetic, um, concerns that I think are inherent with additional parking on private property in the front of the house will certainly be, um, looked at, uh, when those requests are made. I think the other thing that I want to say as a follow-up to Mark's presentation is that, uh, the city council is aware that, uh, we are looking into code enforcement and ways to improve uh, our code enforcement. One of the statistics that I recently, um, saw that 72% of our code enforcement cases are five years or older. That relates to some of our more challenging code enforcement cases. And so what's before you tonight are changes to title five, really along the series of the municipal code chapter changes that we're going through, beginning at title one, going all, all the way through the end of the, the municipal code. And so a lot of the changes that Mark talked about are really for consistency's sake. Uh, but know that staff is doing a deep dive in, uh, looking at how we handle code enforcement. And there may be additional recommendations, uh, that may very well involve changes to the code or it may simply involve changes to how we perform code enforcement. And so I just want council to know that. Um, and that really wasn't the thrust of tonight's conversation. The, the thrust of tonight's conversation was to keep with this process of going systematically through the municipal code and make adjustments for consistency and, and get feedback from council on anything that you feel that, uh, we should be looking at.
Okay, uh, appreciate both. I just wanted to clarify that, uh, council understands. Because I don't want anyone to, uh, get that impression that, uh, the standard is dropping and that's, we want people to park on their lawns. I don't think that's what staff's insinuating. I don't believe the council wants to see that either. So with that, Linda, um, did we want to go back? Did you want me to go back to you or would you like me just to go around? I can hit on everyone, whatever you wish.
Oh, you can, I can, I can wait. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just going to, I can just see everybody here, so I'm just going to go down the line. So Marty, I see you next to me on the screen, so why don't I have you and then I'll just keep going down the list. We don't have to raise hands.
Um, so, I think, uh, the uncertain, the little bit of the confusion there for the, um, lawn parking. We, the council did approve the allowance of yard parking and that was all shown with, uh, pictures. So, so maybe on the next phase that we could bring some photos in that showed what that additional parking, uh, area would, would, uh, include. I think that would, uh, eliminate some of that confusion. For the, uh, I'm going to try to go in order here. For the change in the number of boats, trailers, campers, it's currently one. Is that correct, uh, city attorney?
That is correct.
Right. Um, I'm fine with it remaining the same. Um, I, I think I've seen there's more of a problem with inoperable vehicles than, um, than in quantity than more than one camper. And there's no need to change that. I'm, I'm, I'm happy with that. Mr. Mayor, do you want me to continue going through the list or we want each person to kind of take a shot at each item?
Mark, would it be better for you if we just go through the? Yes, Marty, why don't you go? So we'll have to go back and forth. Yeah, please, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Um, thank you.
Sure. It wasn't noted, uh, this, this question I do have, um, is the tightening up on vacant properties. Um, there are a number of them that have remained in a certain degraded state. Um, I'm looking at, I believe it would be codes 524 and 526 to have those kind of match each other a little bit better. I remember when a lot of properties were being foreclosed and the code enforcement department had to arrange a, an agreement with the property owner to, to have somebody maintain those properties, if I'm correct. I think that's something that we should be doing with these vacant properties, um, that are in high visible areas on El Camino, um, where the weeds just get to be super high and then eventually somebody has to go out there and code enforcement gives them notice and they, they cut it. But it's, they, those vacant properties should be on a maintenance program. That was similar to the abandoned properties for, for the foreclosures to, if, um, that's my comment. Um, I'm, I'm in favor of making sure the inoperables stay off driveways. I don't think there's a place for them. Um, they should be, uh, out of view entirely. And those vehicles that need to put a tarp on for a temporary basis, that's understandable, but to leave a vehicle in a driveway with the tarp on and now we can't tell if it's, um, if it's actually operable. I think may perhaps the solution there is to have the license plate displayed with that type of tarp so that it could be determined that that vehicle, uh, is operable or inoperable without having to get a search warrant. My last question, uh, clarification is for feeding of wild animals. I didn't, I'm going off the presentation now. Does that include feral cats?
If I may, through the chair, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we've looked at a couple of different ordinances. I know staff had a couple of suggestions about what animals would be included, but we, we can, we can bring back, uh, that depending on the city council's direction.
Right. Um, there are a, a number of people that actually try to save these cats. Um, I have a bigger heart for, uh, the kitties than for the pigeons. Um, so I, I think, uh, getting some feedback and there's a couple of groups that, uh, could be contacted that can give you actually what they're trying to do. I think they're, they're also trying to catch them and, and trying to find homes for them. So, um, one way to get, to get them to you is to actually feed them. So if you don't feed them, they're just going to continue running around. So, um, uh, I think those are, those are, uh, my comments. So, thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Uh, any, uh, things you, um, you want to say back, Mark? Should I go to the next? All right, let's go to the next. Uh, Linda, I see your hand up. Why don't we have you next?
Okay, thanks. Um,
You're welcome.
So I have a, a couple of things. Um, one is, uh, Mark, you mentioned in your presentation, the residential par- parking permit program. I was just wondering if anybody has, um, signed up for it?
I don't know the answer to that. We can check with Public Works Director. That's the department that, um, is in charge of operating that program.
Okay, I think if we can get that and then the numbers I mentioned earlier around the campers and like how big of a problem is, is that would be great. Um, since we're approving all of five, all of five, I wanted to go to page 94 in the packet. It's section 5.08.040. The administrative fines, it says that the amount of the fines imposed pursuant to this article shall be set forth in a schedule of fines established by resolution of the city council. So, since we're reviewing this, is it an appropriate time, then I'd like to actually ask what those amounts are? And then if it's time, should we be looking at just revisiting them? Maybe we would, maybe even increase them. I don't know how long ago this was approved.
Good question. So those are part of the master fee schedule, which the city council does approve each year. And I think the amounts are 100, 200, and 500, although I'm not 100% sure of that. So 500 for the third offense, but the city council is welcome to review those during, you know, the master fee schedule process. We usually don't like to put them directly in this ordinance, because it's easier to adopt or amend a resolution than it is to amend an ordinance. So that's why we have them in the master fee schedule.
Okay, and so the resolution is approved once a year?
The master fee schedule is reviewed by city council or increases the same or less.
Okay. It's, okay. So then the next part is page 94 also. It says, payment of fines. And it says that fine payment shall be mailed or tendered to the City Clerk of San Bruno. And I just wanted to, I don't know if that's the process. I had not heard that. And so if that's what's happening, great. If it's not happening, maybe we just need to correct it. Are fines being sent to the city clerk?
Mark, you got on mute.
Within 15 calendar days?
Yeah. So again, I'm not sure about the answer to who was actually receiving the fine money. It is deposited and we keep track of, because there's an appeal period. So I can, we can get a little more information from the department for you about that.
Okay. And if that's what's happening, that's fine. I'm just, this is the time to bring it up, so if we need to correct it.
Thank you.
Page 96, 5.08.090. This is late charges. So the same thing, it's the same question around the resolution. So would this be in that master fee schedule too?
Yes.
Okay. So that answers that question. Page 104, my next question, and it's 5.08.090. Hold on. 220, the abatement of the nuisance. So this said that the deadline is stated in the city council's resolution. And so I guess my question around the abatement is, I imagine that that's not part of the master fee schedule. This is a separate resolution, and how can we review that? Because I know some of these abatements have been going on for a long time, and I'm wondering if the city council will have an opportunity to shorten that period of time?
So, this is probably worth taking a quick look at, but I think the resolution that's being referred to here is the resolution that the city council would adopt in the event of an abatement. So for example, there aren't abatement resolutions that are just pending and waiting to be used. It's a resolution that's adopted in a particular circumstance when an abatement is required.
Okay.
Because in order to have an abatement, you have to go to court. You can't enter private property without a warrant or without some sort of court order. So what's happened in the past is that there has been a problem on the property, the city goes to court, we get an order. In the case I'm thinking of, the gentleman appealed, there was a resolution that says, resolution to abate it, and then he didn't abate it. So then the city had to pay to abate it, and then that amount has been reported now against the property. So that's usually how the process works.
Okay. So could we get an update, or can we actually get a copy of the resolution?
For that particular situation?
For 5.08.220A?
Yeah, I'll see what I can find on that. Thank you.
Okay, great. That'd be great. The next section is page 1, for page 116, the section in regards to... Oh, regarding weed removal? I'm just curious, I don't know, I mean, again, this is new to me from a municipal standpoint, but as far as the sidewalk goes and the weeds on the sidewalk, I know we have some weeds right now that I will get to, but in some areas it just looks a little in dire need of some TLC. And I'm just wondering, is there anything that we can place in here, or anything that is already, that would already cover this section? Because I do think that some owners have just completely neglected the sidewalk. And I admittedly am one of them for the time being, and we will be weeding it, but I mean, there's some that have just been kind of out of control for some time.
So that's an interesting question. So remember, this title deals with things on private property, not on public property. So weeds in the sidewalk are on public property. And the provisions of weeds in here are really designed to address not just nuisance conditions, but mainly fire hazards. But with respect to weeds in the sidewalk, there's another section of our code, which is in an upcoming chapter, I'm sorry, I can't remember which one it is, that talks about the requirement for adjacent property owners to maintain the sidewalk in front of their homes.
Yep.
Right. So I don't know that the city has enforced weed abatement on sidewalks under that particular section of the code.
So is it, I think, just to make sure that they're cohesive, is this a good place to place it where it would balance it out as a nuisance? Or would you recommend waiting till we cover that code? And I don't know if we're gonna cover that code, because it sounds like that's a whole different section.
It's a different title. It'll come to eventually, hopefully. Yeah, but I would recommend not putting it in here, because we want to keep this just a private property.
Okay. Okay. Page 136. I guess this section, I'm just trying to figure out the benefit of the alcohol of this change in its under the definitions that deemed approved activity. Is it essentially, is this grandfathering in these commercial activities?
Yeah, so it's slightly confusing. Thanks for asking. So the original code said that if your alcohol establishment was approved before the old zoning code, which I think was 2003, then those activities are based on a different set of standards. In other words, they're legal non-conforming, and they can continue. So the only thing I wanted to make sure is that by amending this code, you didn't suddenly extend that date to 2020, right? So now everything between 2003 and 2020 is automatically legal non-conforming. No, we want to just keep that 2003 date. So that was the reason for the change.
To keep it, okay. And then I'm almost done. There was this section that I'm not seeing in my notes. There had been a suggestion to add around, I think it's the illegal growth of cannabis? I'm looking for it right now. I'm sorry, I didn't note it. And I just want to make sure.
Sorry, I remembered that, but I'm not exactly sure where that is located. This is not the cannabis part of the code, obviously.
But it is? I mean, it's part of this Title V?
Yeah, we can search for that, and...
Okay, I'll keep, let me see if I can find it while I'm talking. And then my, I guess another question is, would it be possible, and I guess the problem would be from an administrative standpoint, is how you actually enforce it, but I'd be curious to know if it would be possible to somehow add, if we're talking about, you know, individuals who can have cars, a number of cars or inoperable vehicles, is there any way to add to the definition of nuisance, people who are parking their cars to go to the airport, if it can be proven that that's in fact where they're going? I know that's been a pretty big complaint.
Yeah, so that is a difficult problem to solve, and it's a problem that is, I think, best addressed by the residential permit parking program. That's sort of exactly what that's designed to address, where there's an influx from an external source of individuals' parking and taking up street parking that should be able to be used by the neighborhood. The difficulty with having it in this title or any other title is, again, this is private property only, not public property. But the difficulty is, yes, of course, with respect to enforcement, you know, it's not a nuisance if the same car, I mean, we're not going to be able to find out, why are you parking there?
Right.
So we can't ask people, why did you park your car? And yes, we know there are reports, of course, of people parking in neighborhoods so they can go to the airport. We've seen people do it. We know that's happening. Best addressed, I think, by a residential permit parking program.
Okay. And then we'll find out how many people have actually gotten that at the next meeting, right? Or whenever this comes back to. Okay. And then I found it. It's on page 92, at the bottom of page 92. And it says, I won't read it all. I'll wait for you to get to it.
Yeah. Oh, I see it. I understand. Yeah, so this was added to be consistent with new California laws having to do with building and plumbing codes. And the only thing, of course, relating to cannabis, is making sure that there's evidence, if there is cannabis being grown on the property, which is allowed under state law, that the agreement, the rental agreement, if it's a problem that prohibits it. So it's not something that normally staff would enforce unless there's a complaint that there's more than the allowed amount of cannabis grown on the property.
Okay, okay. That helps. Thank you. And then just one more suggestion is regarding the inoperable vehicles. Would it be possible, and again, I don't know, would it be possible to have inoperable vehicles register with the city and pay a fee?
So that's a good question, probably something we might want to check with the police department about. I don't know that the city can require additional registration of private property over and above what the state requires. And I'm taking a guess at this, so I apologize if it turns out to be wrong, because I've never been asked that question. But probably that's a preemption issue in that the state occupies the field of vehicle registration. And I think it's unlikely that, or at least there might be a problem with that, but I'll be happy to look into that and bring back an answer for you.
Okay, great. Okay. Thank you so much, everybody, for indulging me. Thank you.
Thanks. Laura?
Hey, you know, I think just on that point, I think that, and I know you haven't gone through this process before, a lot of these things, Councilmember Mason, but I think sending an email to Mark prior to these meetings, I think you have a lot of great questions, a lot of good details, that he might be more prepared for some answers, or at least be able to give you some of these answers. I know that's always, I found very helpful. And Javon, I appreciate this statement. Staff likes to get these questions by at least, I try to send them Sunday night, if not early Monday morning, so you guys have the time to work on. But thank you, Mark, for your presentation. I have a very clear no on allowing additional boats, RVs, or trailers on somebody's property. I think the more we allow, the more the residents go out and buy. And I understand the need. It's expensive to store a boat or a trailer somewhere else. And if you happen to have the few properties in San Bruno that have the luxury of being able to have a nice wide space to be able to store that, that's great. But I think it's more of an eyesore to see more of that on your property. Any inoperable vehicle, I don't think it should be screened. I think, oh, yes, yes, on prohibiting any inoperable vehicle from being screened. I think it just takes, I think they should just, shouldn't be there. I think it just takes away from our authority to do anything. And I guess, I guess the question I was gonna have is, what is the definition of screened? Is it anything that sort of, go ahead, Mark?
Yeah, that's also a good question. So some of those definitions are really in the zoning code. And one of the things that we didn't have time to do before tonight's meeting is check to understand with Community Development Department, what does that really mean? And I think from a practical standpoint, it certainly means a fence. It could be a hedge that is tall enough that you can't see it from the public right-of-way. But this is one of those areas where it's really, the goal is to not see it from the public right-of-way. And so oftentimes, it is involving the exercise of discretion by a code enforcement officer. You know, if you can see the tip of the antenna of the inoperable car, is that enough? It's hard to say. If you can see the whole thing, everybody would agree, well, no, you know, you can't do that. So it's really done on a case-by-case basis. And I think that trying to come up with what's appropriate screening, or what is it, is a conversation we'll need to have with Community Development to see if they have some standards around that. And so I understand your desire to basically say no to inoperable vehicles, whether they're screened or not. And so the result of that would, I think, be that we would have a effort by the code enforcement department to abate inoperable vehicles on private property. And we do have part of our processes that would allow us to do that. It's an involved due process, because you're essentially taking away somebody's private property. And so other cities have done that at some significant expense, but that is something that the city can do from an operational standpoint. It's a matter of time and resources. So if we do put that in the code, I think it's important to understand that we need the, the staff will need the resources to engage a program to abate those vehicles on private property.
I mean, the other problem is, I've seen several vehicles now, there's one up in the Glendale neighborhood, there's one up, in fact, in the backyard of the house fire on Rosewood, of these inoperable vehicles. And I would hate living next door, knowing that you've got a vehicle parked in the backyard. It probably has some sort of gasoline in the tank, and it's just a hazard. And so I think when they're unseen, we just, we have the potential for a hazard. And with that house fire on Rosewood, that had to be, I know, not had to be, I know, very scary for the neighbors, the surrounding neighbors. Tarps, I think it just creates another problem in the community. I think it's, the tarp looks good for about the first month, and then the San Bruno winds and the elements tear it up, and before you know it, it's just shredded tarp. And I think that just, again, and it leads to more problems when you can't see what's going on. But, you know, I mean, the goal here, and I think, I know for the few residents who spoke, we want to be proud of our city. We want it to be a beautiful city. We don't want something where we allow for additional, for people to just leave inoperable vehicles on a driveway, somewhere where, you know, the weeds are growing underneath tires and underneath the vehicle. And it's just, it's not, it's unsightly. And that's not a neighborhood that I want to live in. Thank you.
Michael Zalatorre?
Thanks, Mark, for the study. I think we're doing really great on revisiting all these things and getting everything aligned with our zoning and getting the municipal code up to date. So really appreciate you staying on task with this. I had, you know, I'm looking in the report on the definition of inoperable vehicle, and I noticed one of the conditions that could define an inoperable vehicle is lacking a current registration. And there are, the DMV does allow people to register a vehicle as non-operational. It doesn't mean that it doesn't, that it can't, that it doesn't run. It just means that they are not planning on using it on the road, and they don't get a new tag, and they are still compliant, basically, with the state regulations on the vehicles. So if we designate those vehicles that are basically... if we designate those vehicles that are basically compliant with the state as inoperable as well, based on this definition, would those then also uh run afoul of our ordinance uh in in being able to have those in a driveway?
Yeah, that that, that's an interesting point. And, you know, the, what we want to try to figure out is, what is the issue that we're trying to solve? And clearly, it it doesn't matter to to anybody who lives in the neighborhood or any member of the public, whether the vehicle has a tag on it, it, it's expired or not expired, right? That that's not the point. Point is, the appearance of the vehicle and the fact that vehicles that are not operational are more likely to appear as a public nuisance. That's what we're, what we're trying to get at. So the fact of, are they registered or not, or do they have a certificate, or don't they? Is is probably not the way to address the blight of inoperable vehicles. Um, but that is something we can look into and talk to the police department about. We did discuss these sorts of issues with them regarding parking on streets, which is another topic. Because there, you, you know, the registration has to be expired for more than six months before you can tow the the vehicle, as I recall. So there are lots of restrictions in terms of towing vehicles. You know, and you can cite them, but then people don't pay, and and then so what? The vehicle is still there. So if we really want to address the problem, it's really the appearance of it or saying that you you can't have these on on private property. But I'll look at that that definition and look at the ino- nonoperational registration to see if that's something that we could look at.
Yeah, and and it's curious that that aesthetics becomes an issue here, because I can have a really nice-looking car with no engine in it. It's inoperable. Um, and I can't use it. It's sitting there just taking up space. But if it looks nice and nobody complains about it, then it's okay. Versus, I could have just an old rust bucket that's my daily driver, and it completely deteriorates everybody's uh property values, but it it runs, and I drive it every day, and it's parked on the street, and that's okay. So that that's where I kind of have some some problem with this, where we're trying to define these things based on a problem. And and I understand the problem is that there are some ugly cars that don't drive um that people have complained about. Um, but at the same time, you know, i- i- if we do this blanket sort of statement, is that anything that doesn't run um can't be there. Uh, and you you know, you said on on the street, uh, you won't tow it for six months, but you know, so how long? Is it six months sitting in a driveway where it's deemed a problem? Or is it, you know, one month in the driveway? Is it a year in the driveway, multiple years? You know, do we wait until there's weeds growing under the thing before we we say it's an issue? So um, I, you know, I I I feel like we need, really need to have a little bit more definition and guidance for people to know what what is appropriate. I- if we are to make any changes. I mean, I think right now, um, th- there's enough in in what I'm seeing here where we could definitely uh with with complaints from enough neighbors, take action on some of these things. Um, so I I don't know that we need to necessarily change a lot of that. And then just regarding uh tarps, I mean, are are we using the term tarp and car cover interchangeably? Because a- again, that that could make a big difference, right? You could have a very nice car cover on a very nice car parked out there. And do that now, the, those cars now get categorized along with the ones that are using tarps to disguise uh, you know, the the fact that they're junk.
Right, you put your finger on another, a problem, a potential problem with with saying we're gonna eliminate all tarps is, is how do you define that? Um, and you're you're right, Councilmember um Davis indicated that tarp, or whatever it is, or cover, might look good in a certain period of time and maybe not later. So we do have parts of the nuisance of Title Five that talk about uh things that are dilapidated. So that's a word that that's that's used, and obviously, that's a judgment call. So that's a situation where if the tarp or cover, whatever it is, is dilapidated, we could say, no, you've got to get rid of it. But the answer to that isn't gonna be, we're gonna take your car from you. The answer is, you're gonna get a new tarp for it, right? Or a new cover. So, so so it's the the uh potential penalty has to match what is, what is it that's creating the nuisance? And if the nuisance is created by an ugly cover, then the solution to that nuisance is getting a new cover.
Okay, all right, okay, that makes sense. And then uh in terms of the number of uh, you know, non, non-car type vehicles, I I think, yeah, I agree with everyone else that we should keep that number the same. I don't see any need to to expand that. And um, in regard, the pigeons, um, yeah, I think that that's definitely a problem for most things. And uh, listening to Marty's concerns about the cats, um, you know, I get, you know, cats actually, feral cats do provide a service in that they eliminate some vermin that are loose in the yard, but um, if people aren't careful about how they, how they feed them, they could also potentially attract other undesirable animals like raccoons and skunks, uh foxes, and those those animals then attract uh coyotes and mountain lions. Probably don't want to attract those things into our neighborhood. So if um, if we are going to address uh feeding um wild animals, perhaps we can um also include some guidelines around what is acceptable and not when it comes to to feral cats, if we want to permit that.
We can bring that back for you for some further analysis.
Thank you. That's all I got.
I'm sorry?
That's all I got.
Okay, thanks, Michael. Um, Mark, on one section, and uh it says uh camp, camper shells which are left for an unreasonable period of time in front of yards and are visible from the street. So I I I know what it means, but when it says unreasonable period, wh- how is that measured? How is that quantified?
So um normally, what would happen is, if there's a complaint from somebody in the neighborhood uh says, you know, he's had his his camper shell out there for um six years and hasn't done anything about it, code enforcement would go to the person and say, have you had it out here for six years? And the person says, yes, well, probably that's an unreasonable amount of time. I think the the intent of that is to allow people to use their their camper shells during the year, during camping season, whenever that might be, or if they're retired maybe throughout the year, but not to have it as a storage place for for those shells. So the distinction is that the the property is being used by the resident as opposed to it's just a place to store it. And that is hard to determine. You're right, uh, Mr. Mayor, is that it's it's not well-defined. We can certainly take a look at that.
Okay, and I I would agree with keeping the number the same, as was indicated by Michael. Um, in in my understanding, just so we're clear, if there is a vehicle, of any vehicle, that is in a driveway that doesn't have an engine, it's on blocks, that is not acceptable. Is that correct?
Right now, if it's not screened, you can't have that in your, in your driveway. That's correct.
Okay, so that's, that's one thing. So if the vehicle is in the driveway, and there are weeds and cobwebs and whatever, nests that have developed, um, but it's in the driveway, but it does have an engine, it does have its tires, is that still acceptable?
If if the vehicle is operable but ugly, you can park it in your driveway.
And how does one determine if it is quote operable unless you really turn on the engine? I mean, so.
So there is a definition in the code about what constitutes operability, and I don't have it at hand, but I know there's a number of factors that staff would use to determine that. Um, again, it's not an easy thing to do. Um, the the person doesn't have to allow you to turn it on. The person doesn't have to comply with the request to turn it on, to see if it is operable. So really, that determination has to be made in the worst-case scenario from the public right of way visually by the code enforcement officer.
Okay, and I'll echo some of the comments my colleagues made about uh, you know, additional uh RV or boats. I agree. Keep in mind, what had happened years ago, uh, from my memory, was that uh an initiative was placed to not allow any of those uh on the side, on on the street, public street. I think it was a very close vote, maybe sixty-four, sixty vote, uh sixty-five votes, but it did cause quite a uh stir in the community. Um, some folks believed it was uh, you know, what you could and couldn't have, and you know, your, your house, your home is your castle. Um, the other thing is, is on the aspect of graffiti, uh, most of that has been kept and was expanded some years ago as far as making sure things were locked up, making sure uh how it was quantified and defined is as times have changed. But are we still under the same premise as far as mitigation is concerned? Whether it's twenty-four hours for gang or profanity, and it's under the seventy-two hour notice? If it's other than that, to businesses or residential?
Yes, I I do understand from the Community Development Department that they have a graffiti hotline. It's actively monitored. And um, I understand that that's taken care of as quickly as possible. We have a graffiti abatement contractor that we use for that.
Which has been a a big help, and I do know that um, when a place uh continues it, and it, and again, if folks can go back in time on what it was like, it was horrific here. Um, but they are told they have to take precautions, whether it's lighting, whether it's vegetation or something, and then they will be assessed that money. So I appreciate that. Um, I think I'm I'm good for now. Mark, is there any uh more information, or have we provided you uh enough, too much, um, information tonight?
Well, this is very helpful. I think I've got all the comments written down. I'll go over them with our staff, you know, in the coming days. And we'll bring back a staff report and uh with some more, some of the information, you know, that's been requested, and then provide some proposed changes to the ordinance that reflects your direction.
Okay, if nothing else from council, and I've seen anything, we're going to, again, this is just a pro- a provide direction, which we have done.